City Council Mayor and Alderman, October 28th, 2024. If you'll rise, we'll start with our prayer.
Our Father, this afternoon, we thank you again for the privilege of conducting the business here of the city government at Mont Eagle. We thank you for our little town. We thank you for the residents of our little town, and we thank you for the mayor and aldermen that are serving. We continue to ask a blessing on the decisions made and the continued striving to do the best in every area. So we just ask your blessing on our meeting. We pray for our policemen, that you would keep them safe and continue to watch over them. We pray that you be with our firemen in the same way, and the challenges they face, continue to keep them safe, and help them, the first responders, with the emergency situations they face each day. We just ask a blessing on our candidate pledger's parents tonight, as he has returned to us, and thank you for his safety, and ask a blessing on the challenges they're facing with their health. And we just ask that you go with us now and give us to be mindful of the needs of others in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Join me, please, in the pledge to our nation's fight.
I pledge allegiance to the fight of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
One.
Here.
Jessica.
Here.
Sam.
Here.
Here.
Here. Citizens, com- oh, no, I'm sorry. Approval of the minutes, there was a public hearing of September 30th, and a city council meeting of September 30th, both the same day. So let's do the public hearing first. Is there a motion to accept, is submitted?
I'll make a motion, we accept the public hearing minutes.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing on all those approving of the motions, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Next is the city council regular meeting minutes of September 30th. Is there a motion to accept?
I'll move that we accept the minutes from September 30th, as they are just written.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on the motion, additions or corrections? All those in favor of approving the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. The minutes are approved for both. Okay, citizens' comments, those that wish to be heard. I remind you of the three-minute speaking limit, which will apply to all of us here. So is there a citizen that wishes to be heard at this time? Mrs. Pilcher.
Several weeks ago, our church had a cleanup Main Street, and we, it was very successful. They got over forty bags of trash, but it took them a while to find the trash, because our staff is doing such a good job of picking up the trash on Main Street, that they had to go down side streets to get trash. I just wanted to commend our staff.
Thank you for that, and to the church members, but also to our staff. It's a few folks doing a lot of work, and I appreciate the comment, I'm sure we all do. Any other citizen comments at this time? Okay. Mayor's communications are next. Let me just go over a couple of things, just as reminders and updates. First of all, the water plant, I was away this weekend, but I understand we had some rain. Well, we had .14 inches of rain, and our lake is currently at seven feet. The towers, the tanks seem to be in good shape and filled, so we're okay. We are buying water from Tracy City. But all of that will come to an end when we do what Tree Deck has mandated, which is to repair the sediment basins at the water plant. So we are making arrangements through our engineering firm and Tracy City to shut down the plant by all our water, which is already treated by Tracy City and directly piped into our water system, so it doesn't have to go to the lake and the plant. And they'll be supplying us water for that week of construction. I don't think I want to issue at this time any drought restriction mandates, but if it becomes necessary due to weather, or an additional time needed for sediment basin repair, then we may have to do that. We should always conserve best we can, but especially around this time, with the work going on and lack of rainfall, we need to conserve every drop. So I just pass that on. The, um... Oh, just so you know, the basin repairs, taking about a week, is estimated to be, contracted now to be eighty-two thousand dollars. That's a repair like the two water tanks were repairs, so this is money that's coming out of our enterprise fund only. As I've said before, not the general fund, just the water and sewer enterprise fund. And I believe that's all I have now. Calendar of events, briefly, the Tracy City American Legion post is planning on having a breakfast for veterans, November 9th at nine o'clock. The scouts, Boy Scouts and Cub Scouts, will be doing the bulk of the work and serving. So if there are veterans that can make that, I think your presence would be appreciated. So that's November 9th, Saturday, at nine o'clock. And it'll be a joint venture, Tracy City's doing it, but they asked and said it was certainly all right for Mont Eagle veterans to join. The other thing, working around the scheduling around Thanksgiving, which we have always done, it seems, our next meeting is going to be November 18th. We were trying to leave the Thanksgiving week for family and travel and whatever else was needed. So that's those two items. Reports of committees and members, we can start with the police department, please.
Good afternoon, councilmen and citizens of Mont Eagle. I'm just gonna go through the numbers here. Go right down the road. We have one DUI for the month, we had two domestic assaults, we had one disorderly conduct, we had four reckless driving, we had one burglary, one drug-related case, two trespass case, five identity thefts. Citations. Citations, we only wrote sixteen last month. The month before that, there were sixty-six citations. Total number of 911 calls that we received, it did go up from last month to 202 from 180. The number of vehicle crashes disturbingly went up from sixteen, well, sixteen this month, last month was only six. We did make four arrests, okay? So that's the numbers. I've started something, each month I'm gonna do what they call a monthly, I call a monthly recap. And so, by sitting down and speaking with citizens, I'm just gonna go over this, I wrote this out. Says, "In the last month, I have had the pleasure of speaking with many of you. I've listened to your concerns and wanted to address a few of them. Do we have a migrant problem? Simply put, no, we do not. Do we have a homeless problem? Simply put, no, we do not. And if we did, we would do the right thing and find out how we could best help those who have less than we do. We do have occasional persons stroll through town and may stay for a bit. And contrary to popular belief, I can't just arrest someone for sitting on a park bench and walking up and down the road. However, if you're a business owner, and a person is not ordering food or buying items, and they refuse to leave, call us. We can come out and we can address that. If you're a homeowner, and there's someone on your property, and they've refused to leave, call us and we can address that. The law states that when we come out and we tell someone, hey, the owner or the business owner is telling you not to come back, under TCA 3914-405, criminal trespass, you will be arrested. That has to be informed." So I know many businesses, they don't like to do that, obviously. I mean, who wants to do that, right? But if you've got someone that continuously is coming and harassing, legally, there's nothing I can do except for ask them to leave. Unless you give us permission to criminally trespass them, and then a form has to be signed, okay? So that's gonna be the quickest way that we can eliminate any issue with someone that's unwanted, okay? Also, I have been informed that we write too many tickets, and it seems like that we are picking on people. We issued citations for two reasons, a change in driving behavior, and the correction of vehicle violations such as tent, faulty lighting, busted windchills, busted windchills that prohibit viewing ability. We slowed down traffic, we did slow down traffic last month. The numbers show, as you can see, our crashes tripled, because I fell into the trap of, hey, let's not write too many tickets, hey, let's not do traffic. I fell into that trap, and I want that to happen again, because we went from six traffic crashes to sixteen, two of which were pretty bad, okay? So citations, obviously, they went down for whatever reason. You have to ask yourself, would you rather have more citations, or would you rather have more crashes? I know I would furthermore have citations other than that. Lastly, please don't come to my office and ask me to tear up a citation, okay? It's illegal for me to tear up another officer's citation for one. Secondly, it's wrong and it's quite immoral, so I won't stoop to that level. Just go to court. If you feel that you've been wrongly cited, tell the judge. And if we have been wrongly cited, and we view the video, then the officer will be dealt with accordingly. So in closing, as the chief, I will no longer let the pressure of public opinion sway my decision. My job is to provide the safest environment for the citizens and the visitor of Mont Eagle. It is a privilege and an honor to serve this community, and I do with great respect.
Alderman, any questions or comments for the chief?
I have one.
Yes.
Any news on this guy?
That guy has disappeared. He's no longer in Mont- I know who it is, I do, and he's no longer here, unfortunately. So, well, he's not in Mont Eagle. He is alive, but he's not in Mont Eagle, so.
Well, without going into detail, what about the identity theft? Anything anybody needs to worry about?
So we have had a lot of identity thefts, and this is to the elder community. They're receiving things from IRS stating that you must pay, I'm just gonna pick an arbitrary number, two hundred and fifty dollars, or you're going to be arrested. And so these, unfortunately, they're writing these checks, they're sending them off, and or they're giving, you know, more money than that, and, you know, they're getting swindled for more and more and more. So this is going around, and it happens every year around this time. People take advantage of people, and, you know, they just, quite frankly, though, I don't know how they do it, but they must have a list of someone who's sixty-five years or older, quite frankly, and most of these identity thefts have been that.
Are they coming by mail, or by phone, or how are they getting them?
Well, actually, both. By mail, most of them, though, or however, by phone. They are being robo-called and saying, hey, your name is Nate Wilson, you owe me yada, 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 if you don't pay this, then I'm gonna have the county sheriffs come and arrest you.
So is it, is it safe to say that you should not write a check or give out any personal information based on a phone call?
Exactly.
Yeah, okay.
Exactly. So, you know, and if you do have any concerns, you can reach out, if you're a Mont Eagle resident, reach out to the police department. If you're, if you live in Marion County, Grundy County, reach out to the sheriff's departments. And most, nine times out of ten, it's, we can just pick the phone up. And also, if someone says, hey, you've gotta pay this, because if you don't, there's a warrant for your arrest, that's easy for me to pick up the phone and say, hey, nine times out of ten, it's gonna be a lie, because no sheriff's department's gonna say pay me or else. But it's easy for me to check.
So if someone does get something in the mail that they're concerned about?
Bring it to us.
It's okay for them to bring it to the police station?
Absolutely.
And help them understand it?
Absolutely. And we've, I've already done that twice this week, you know, someone brought it up to me, and I said, yeah. And it makes them feel better, you know, obviously, you read that, and you're like, oh my God, I'm gonna go to jail. Well, no, you're not gonna go to jail, I promise you. Throw that in the garbage, so. And the number that's on there, I called one of them this week, hey, this is the chief of Mont Eagle, da-da-da-da, click. So, you know, it's, it's just a scam, and it's unfortunately, because good people are being taken advantage of.
Well, thank you for all that you do, and to your earlier comments, you know, we support you going out and, and making sure that people are following the law, 'cause in the end, I think that is the safest for everybody.
It is, yes, sir.
If we're just treating everybody the same, and...
And quite frankly, we write less citations if people slow down. I mean, really, right? I don't have to write a citation if no one's really speaking, so, well...
Well, if I may, let me address, excuse me, let me address some of that.
Yes.
Your report was spot on. I have received recently complaints about speeders in the usual areas, and then some. So I would ask that you do your job, patrol the streets. If there's a need for a ticket, then so issue it.
Right.
Because people are going to get hurt. Citizens are complaining that either you give too many, you give too little, that's been an age-old problem in the police business forever. But thank you for all that you do, and I'm sure the citizens from their reactions and cooperation with you understand what you're talking about. So thank you for that. Okay, any other questions from the aldermen for the police chief?
Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much. Fire department?
Evening, everybody. Fire department had twenty-four calls for the month of September, well, it should've been October, but it's Monday. Twenty-four calls for October. The department's been working on this EMS endeavor for our AMR and first responder. We've been working with EMS to get our medical supplies for the jump bags, and also working towards the guys getting their EMS and emergency responder certifications. That's all in the makes, one of the, like I was telling you in the last meeting, one of the paramedics from Grundy's actually kinda heading it, and is a member of the department now, so it'll all be in-house, and hopefully should be a reasonable amount for us to start it, is what we're shooting for. So that's all underway. And then on top of that, we've been doing the bi-weekly fire training that's required by the state, and we have pretty good attendance on it. Right now, we've got about twenty-eight guys on the roster for the fire department. A lot of the Tracy City guys has been coming to Mont Eagle for training, we've had some Swanee guys stop by, so I mean, it's kinda, that's what I was hoping for. I wanted, you know, just enter local for everybody, and unison for all these departments. That way, if we need them, we had them, and we was kinda working together, and it's prevailing, it's working. We've used roughly two thousand gallons of water, even, we're being conservative in the fire department, not letting your house burn. We really haven't, we haven't had any structural fires or anything to mention or speak of. One thing that's not mentioned on my report, I talked to you last month about the fire recovery system. I just checked the reports before I come to the meeting, they were successful on recovery, I think of like forty-six hundred dollars, should be getting a check to the city on an interstate call that the department ran, so that's paid and prevailed for, so this will be a little bit of revenue coming in to kinda counterweight our expenses. So pretty excited about that. You know, the fire department's an expenditure agency, this is a way that we can kinda recoup a little bit of the cost that we use for fuel and whatnot, so. I'll skip codes and let AJ give it. Any questions on fire? I'm gonna move on to building.
Ladder truck?
Ladder trucks, all the supplies and materials are there, they're putting it back together, so hopefully this will go quick, because I think they've rented, they had to rent two cranes and bring on site to put the boom back together. As I was telling the mayor last week, I'm just guessing, but now that they're actually putting some money to words, it, I would say they'll move it to the fire. So hopefully within the next week or so.
Did you say that two years ago, Jeff?
Yeah, I did, I did.
I just wanted to clarify that.
Well, even the fireman says we're lying about a ladder truck, they don't believe it either, so, anyway. Questions more for the fire?
Well, you own that with the Palmer?
We were, our hearts are out for Palmer, what their school lost. I was talking to Eric Burgwell, and we was out last night with them, and Eric said within two years, that school would be about a hundred years old, so I think it's probably hurt a lot of the folks in the Palmer community that they've lost their school, but, yeah, I think they, from what I seen, it was kinda contained to the auditorium area of the school, the main part of the school, they kinda kept it out of there. And I'm sure they're working with investigators on it, trying to figure out what was going on, what happened, but I think that Eric told me there were seventy, seventy-five firemen there, ten fire departments, two EMS agencies, and it was a pretty big deal, so. And the county, once again, you know, every department in this county had members that responded to it, everybody come together and pretty well worked flawlessly together, so. Any other questions, fire? So on the building inspection side, there are six inspections that I've done, I've issued two certs of occupancy for residential's. There were six new building permits issued for the town, there were five of those last week, those that were issued, so within a week's time, we've done six permits, so.
Are these new builds?
Yep, these are new builds, residential. Laurel Lake's blowing up, Laurel Lake, Shadow Rock, all out of that, and a lot of stuff's going on out of there.
Oh, I've got 130, 190 trainings set up for January, if you've got any officers you wanna send in.
Yes, I do.
I should have a couple of openings.
Yep. AJ'd love to sign up for that, we just don't know it yet. Come on in.
For codes enforcement, for the month, had two food truck permits, it was new, one was a renewal from a company that changed over names, and another was going to be a new truck and altogether, and got some certified letters getting ready to be issued, mailed just to property owners that's allowing RV, it's kinda set up a homestead on a commercial property, so that's in the works, and I think we also, it ain't on here, but I think had one carryover from last month, or we're still waiting on it.
What's a new truck?
I think the Loaded Tiger Company, I think, is the one that was there, yep. So any questions?
Any other questions from the aldermen?
Any of those food trucks happen to be based out of Mont Eagle? So we can get some sales tax?
No.
Okay, so that's something we gotta work on.
So there's something there, and they brought that up, I'm just kinda, just touch and feel on this. So different people's mentioned the stuff of the food trucks, and, you know, they come to me like I had the answers for everything on it. We have an ordinance to go by that was, that was written and justified in 2014, so that ordinance is very gray back and forth from where we're at to modern day with these food trucks. And if you look at these food trucks, normally they have a line hanging on. So I'm looking at the tax revenue, that is possibility to come into the town, and is it coming to the town, and is it addressed to the town? So I've been going back and forth, just kinda taking notes, trying to put a new ordinance together to kinda upgrade what we have.
Yeah.
And hopefully next month, I'll have something ready to present to everybody, you know, see if that makes it through legal, and see if we can do that, to kinda accommodate with what we've been trying to see and work with and change.
Well, Travis, as you know, we've been starting conversations with Department of Revenue as well, to see how they do their arithmetic, so.
That's right.
We're working on that as well.
Yes. And in closing, kind of a day of past, so the old alderman that's going off, but it's been a pleasure working with you, and I think we gained some ground in Mont Eagle from the time that I've been here with your endeavor, and the fire department's working with the new lead, and good luck to everybody.
Thank you.
Parks and Rec? Anything?
We have nothing new, we have votes, but... It's not the time of year to talk some rec, not the week.
Utility manager?
I don't have anything, this council does.
Nate, do you have anything on the report?
John, we were looking at this water report, and according to this, we sold twenty-three million gallons of water last month?
I'm a good water reporter.
Well, you're the water and sewer director.
Yeah, I am, I'm a good water reporter.
Well, can you tell me why it says that we showed twenty-three million gallons of sales?
I have no idea, you have to ask Duane.
Well, I kind of assume that the person who's the water and sewer director ought to understand these numbers, so we, I just looked up in our, in our water capacity study that Travis Wilson did, and we sell, on average, about two-hundred-and-eighty thousand gallons a day. This is showing we sold eight-hundred thousand gallons a day, which, which doesn't seem to jive, and it's just important, 'cause we're kinda dry.
I'd say you have to ask Duane.
Well, as the water and sewer director, could you ask Duane and see if you can get to the bottom of this? I mean, this is, this is your job to understand these numbers, and if you don't understand the numbers, then it's hard for us to understand these numbers.
Sometimes, you can't understand, so you're gonna go with it.
Well, we pay you to know about it, so I'd like for you to see if you can figure that out. Thank you. So it looks like, according to what we've been selling on average, according to what the mayor said, once we shut our basin down, Tracy should be able to meet the majority of our capacity. And I've been requesting that we do that indefinitely until we get the, some rainfall to recover in our lake, so that we're taking the water that's in our lake and keeping it there as emergency storage. We should be able to do that, we should be able to cover the vast majority of our daily usage through purchase from Tracy City. So I think the mayor said they were getting some stuff online to be able to up their capacity and be able to do that?
Yes, and they should be ready, hopefully, November 1st, which is this upcoming Friday.
But they can't do eight-hundred thousand gallons a day?
No. Well, are there any issues that you have, John, on the sewer side?
No, they could, this company just doing a pot repair, going around different places. They haven't done any long trips yet, they're just doing pot repairs.
Is that the INI contract? Okay. Alderman, do you have any questions? Okay.
What is the usual process of water in Tracy, the usual, that we...
I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
The Tracy water that we buy, it's typically two-hundred thousand?
It's typically in the two-to-three-hundred thousand gallons a month range, and we're, according to this, we were at nine-hundred thousand gallons.
That's without us having water. You know, if the lake is low, yes, our pumping average is somewhere around three-hundred thousand gallons a day, depending on demand and other factors, but Tracy should be able to help us with a large part of it. The point, as Nate outlined, is whatever's in the lake, we would probably need for fire protection. I don't think the Tracy lines are hooked to our fire hydrants, they're hooked to our water tanks, that is the water that we use, but past that, I think, God forbid, we need fire at the hydrants, we'll probably have to take it from the lake. That's why there's this conservation conversation all the time.
The hydrants are connected to the tanks, it's all interconnected.
Okay. Every now and then you hear a different story, but okay, I'll take your word for it. Be that as it may, we'll need water wherever we can get it from, so. Okay, street department?
Yeah. I'm reading, I mean, Mont Eagle, that's not about a truck.
That's on the agenda to bring up now, if you want to address it, you want me to start, that's fine.
Go ahead.
As happens with all equipment and all everything, it reaches a certain life cycle. In talking to Keith, we feel that some of the equipment needs to be replaced, some should be new, some might be able to be used depending on the market and the availability of the product. What we have obtained a price for is a new dump truck, gas-equipped. Someone has offered a snowplow, this vehicle can handle all the snowplow that we need. As you know, for us to wait for the state to do the main highway is one thing, but we have a lot of side roads that are city roads. So the final price would be fifty-eight thousand, five-eighty-five, which is a four-wheel-drive, one-ton dump truck. Gas-fired, not diesel, something that we feel we need, and there is an old vehicle that's probably beyond repair, it's forty-something years old.
Eighty-four model.
Eighty-four model that we would sell on government contract, and whatever we get, we get. But it is in the budget for an amount larger than that, I think it's in the budget for ninety thousand? So we're below that budget number, whatever that means, and also, we feel that with the proper equipment, we can use it for other things. I had an earlier conversation, I don't know if it's going to be parked forever, you see a use for this dump truck, obviously.
Yeah, I mean, it'd be brushed, you know, whatever, pile gravel, like you have water leak, you have to have gravel out, so, I mean, it's not, just not for, a snowplow or nothing.
Right, okay. Okay. It would take a resolution. We don't need two readings. It's not an ordinance, so if we can pass it tonight, we can get started on the process. Any comments from the Alderman?
So Keith, and we had talked about it after the last snow, you had said, we try to plow our roads to keep from knocking the, the reflectors up. So would we actually use a plow, if we had a plow?
Well, the plows, I still think it's like the one Cliff Topf has got, it's light dairy plow, you know, and actually, I don't believe it'll knock reflectors out.
So we would, we would be able to plow the roads if we had this in ways?
And all you can do is just knock the top off of it, and we've got a little sand spreader, you know, and put some sand on it. That's about all we can do. We can't go there and run the interstate or nothing like that, so.
No, I, we, we talked last, about getting the backhoe out last year. You were saying it just tore the reflectors out.
Manhole covers and stuff like that, backhoe don't work with it.
So this would be to replace the Brigadier?
Yeah, yeah. And we also got an old, an older pickup that we had bought from Surplus back when Carl was there. Well, the back bumper's about rusted off it, and a running board fell off in the yard the other day, so, you know, this is a multi-perfect truck.
So this would be a daily driver? That's what, I was asking the mayor about it, because the Brigadier doesn't get much use.
No, no. And we've got another big truck for that. We, we put the leak box on it. When it gets time, we pull it out and use it for it.
So this would keep this one big truck?
Yeah.
Okay. One question?
I'd also have a question and a comment. So as resident of Mont Eagle, I'm happy to see you start plowing roads. But if you think you're not going to knock up the reflectors, you are sadly mistaken. You're going to knock up, you're going to knock reflectors up using it. So, just so that you, you're not, so, so that you're not mistaken.
Okay.
We knock up reflectors, we, we knock up reflectors regularly. So more so when I plow than when the guys know what they're doing.
Well, that could be. Yes, thank you. Operator knowledge is very important. Any questions from the Alderman on this truck?
Is this their government, or the government.org? What is it? Go Gov, the Gov?
Gov Deals.
Gov Deals. Yeah, there you go.
Yes, it is.
It is, say it again.
There's no bidding. This is a government contract vehicle that is the best price anyone could get in the municipal government.
What, what would be the price if it wasn't? Go Gov?
Fifteen or twenty percent more money.
And it's what year?
It's brand new. It's brand new. So I've been looking on Gov Deals, and the closest thing I found was down in Birmingham, and it was a 2001, but it didn't have enough bidding time left on it to, but it was a 73. Y'all know I have been sort of grumbling about, about spending all the capital reserves on the equipment. This is a lot less than, than we had budgeted. And you think we'll, we'll surplus two, we'll surplus the Brigadier and the Hampton?
Yeah.
What do you reckon those will?
I don't know. Like I said, they're, you know, they're old.
Yeah.
That's the thing. Might just bring a strap-on, so I, so you know.
Well, they're both running and driving, right? So it's conceivable we could get five grand for both of them.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So really, we're.
We wouldn't want to bring that, the Brigadier bringing that.
That's what I figured. He'd probably bring five. So if we could get, if we could get out of this for 50, then that's half of what we budgeted.
Right.
I mean, that, I, I didn't, I didn't like the idea of, of buying a new machine that was going to sit like the Brigadier and us eating the depreciation.
No, it'll be, it'll be useful, I think. We bought a used one from TBA, I don't know, eight or 10 years ago. First thing we did, had to put a transmission in.
Yep.
So.
I'm a big fan of buying trucks with transmissions out, because then you get a new transmission.
I understand.
But, but, yeah, that's a little on the cheap extreme, you know.
I'm not a big fan of putting them in, so.
Do the Alderman have any other questions?
No.
Okay.
So we budgeted for this, right?
Yes.
We budgeted 90,000.
Okay. Yeah, I knew we had at one time. And the emergency pump, that it's not going to affect this amount, right? The emergency pump purchase that you did, the 14,000?
That was out of enterprise funds.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure.
The, the sewer pump, the emergency?
Oh, oh, yeah, that's enterprise, yes.
That's enterprise fund.
Okay, yes.
Any other questions? And I'll accept a motion to accept a, I'm sorry?
Listen.
I'll ex-
Also talking about the snowplow. Snowplow is a totally separate thing from the truck.
No, I'm sorry, the what?
The snowplow is that you talked about.
Yes. To donate that.
So that's what I, that's what I'm.
And this vehicle would be equipped to handle that.
And you think it's something you guys would use if we had it?
Well, I mean, it don't snow that much around here, but, you know, like last year, you could have probably.
I'd rather have it not needed as needed.
And it's not something that stays on there all the time. You put it on there and it's nowhere near.
Okay. We don't have to buy.
Make a motion.
Go on the truck. In the truck. Again, it's an attachment, okay?
I'd like to make a motion that we buy the ton truck, 58,585 dollars. Does come with a snowplow?
Uh, no.
Oh, we're gonna have the snowplow?
Somebody is, uh, the donor.
Donate a snowplow.
To buy one and donate it.
There's my motion.
Is there a second to the motion?
I'll say it.
Thank you. Is there further discussion on the motion? Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you all. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
We'll get started on that tomorrow.
All right.
Do you have anything else?
I don't.
Are there any other questions for Keith before he leaves? Okay. Thank you. Building inspector and codes who did planning commission, any reports on the planning commission or questions from the Alderman?
I, I do want to let everybody know that I'm working on this RFQ for consulting services that we talked about. And I should have, I've, I've sent it out to the, to the planning commission. I think I sent it out to y'all as well, didn't I? I got comments from several folks. I've incorporated those comments. It's just about ready to go out again. I don't think, and I'm looking, I guess, to y'all for counsel, I don't think it's something we need to vote to put out, because it says that we can reject any and all bids. So as long as everybody's comfortable with it, I was gonna make some final edits, maybe even first thing in the morning if I get a chance, and get my coffee in there early, and, and send it out for one more round of comments, and then go ahead and get that rolling so that maybe we can get somebody, get some bids, and, and start that process, hopefully by the end of the year.
Well, then let me do this. Does any Alderman have any questions or problems with following Nate's outline?
No.
I think he should proceed, I think, by consensus.
Yeah.
Because this was discussed several times, and I think we're just continuing to move forward.
Yeah, I'll send it, I'll send it out one more time. But like I said, it doesn't obligate anybody, because it's a request for qualifications that just says we're, we're looking for information.
Meetings on November 4th.
Yes.
Yeah, we've got a, we've got a separate planning commission meeting on November 4th.
Yes. And the BZA.
And BZA.
Beautification and tree board.
Did you hear?
Had not heard back on that grant.
That was the tree board portion of.
Yeah, that was the tree board.
We had a meeting last week. Jessica received notice that we got 35?
Around 35,000.
About 35,000, that Keith is working with Sequanchi Valley to fix the light electrical outlets on the poles on Main Street. As you, I hope you remember, we're planning a tree trail along here for Christmas with a scavenger hunt, where kids can, and adults, can find ornaments on the trees. And we will be announcing the best decorated tree at, where Santa Claus is going to announce that after the Christmas parade. I hope you also remember that we have written a request to Blue Cross Blue Shield of Tennessee to get a playground out here in Hannah Pickett Park. They would pay for everything, and they have a policy of putting in escrow money for maintenance of the playground. So there's no cost to us. We won't know even if we're in the running until the end of November, and we won't know if we actually get the grant, which is for a million dollars. So we're wanting a really nice playground. We won't know that until after the first of the year. We are close to, we're closer to getting a sign for the Mont Eagle Elementary School. We've got $10,000 from South Cumberland Community Fund, but we need to raise a 15,000 if anybody wants to make a donation. I'll accept that. We're, we're gonna hopefully have a fundraiser sometime February, March, to raise money for the school sign. And after the first of the year, I'm gonna be coming back to y'all and asking for money to replace the gazebo out here with a new gazebo. We've, we're getting estimates of the cost, and put it up sometime next spring. Any questions? Pam?
When is the parade?
The parade is December 7th at 3 o'clock.
3 o'clock. And when is the tree lighting?
The tree lighting, we have a difficult situation with trying to light all the trees at the same time on a Saturday afternoon, because we don't have staff, and these outlets out here are each individually have to be turned on. So we're going, we're still working on how we're gonna do that, but we're hoping to have some volunteers to light them up at the same time that Santa Claus is going in the firetruck from here down to Hannah Pickett Park, I mean, to Hart and Park, that we would light the trees as, as he goes down.
Okay.
That, at 3 o'clock is departure time for number two.
Yeah. Lineup is 2 o'clock.
Right.
Where are you lining up at?
I'm trying to get approval for the same area we did July 4th, which is the old flea market across from the McDonald's area. That seemed to work well, and I just need owner's permission and have not been able to contact the owner yet. I know there's someone that's in charge of it, and we're reaching out to him as well, but we really need the official word from the owner. So we're working on that. I do have two things just to comment on. The Blue Cross Blue Shield grant would be done fully by professionals.
Oh, yes.
And it would be really laid out in a proper way, which I think is important.
They will have to work with our Keith and whoever else on the lay of the land and, and what?
Geography.
Yeah, the geography of the land and, and where to put it and all that.
And to me, the sign is important for in front of the school, because it happens to be right in the middle of town.
Yes. Well, and we are going to have the sign surrounded. The stand for it is going to be the native stone that is used all around here. We're hoping that's gonna be kind of the first of many signs around town, Main Street, made with this, with the stone.
Okay. Any questions from the Alderman?
Oh, and Doreen's son is going to be Santa Claus this year.
Oh, great. He has been since Harry and I gave it up, and his wife Amanda.
So, but I'm not sure people knew that, so.
And I owe you a reply to that email, and I've been traveling and I'm out of town, but I will reply to it. I saw it, and I will get to it. I apologize.
I'm not really sure what you're talking about.
You sent me an email asking me several questions.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions from the Alderman? From Martha Ann? Thank you very much, as always, Martha Ann, for your continued work as a volunteer. We reviewed the budget, and you just have to keep volunteering. But, thank you. I will mention too, speaking of Martha Ann and now her husband David, they're in charge of the voting. They will be voting in this building for the general election, November 5th. The polls open, what time?
8 o'clock.
8 o'clock, the polls open for Marion County. So if you live in Marion County, 8 o'clock here, Election Day, this building.
And they open till 6:00, and we encourage early voting, which is still going on down in Jasper, for Marion County. I'm not sure where for.
Grundy is Plainview and, I believe, the old courthouse, isn't it?
30th, I think, yeah.
The old school.
And early voting ends someplace around the 30th or 31st.
That'd be correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I'd also like to make people aware that Debbie and the staff in Town Hall do Toys for Tots every Christmas, and get presents for all of the children who won't be getting much for Christmas.
Thank you for mentioning that. You want to make a comment or two? Then I will. This is an ongoing city project that I received in the mail my first year here in Mont Eagle, and the staff, as Martha Ann said, asks for donations by letter. Does the shopping, does the wrapping, and gets it to the children for Christmas, and it's usually those that may not know Santa Claus. So Santa at the gazebo, as I understand it, after the parade, is more candy and pictures. But these are gifts to open for under the tree, so thank you for reminding me of that. Okay. Are you ready? Imagine Mont Eagle.
Well, I mean, I think I already talked about the RFQ. I, so I don't know that there's much else to mention other than, I think that is the next step. That's gonna involve more public input. So, so this, the idea is that this is a consultant that comes in and does two major things. One, one looks at our zoning ordinance and tries to help us better reflect what we want it to do. I think lots of people from lots of different walks of life had said that our zoning ordinance has some areas where, where we can improve our regulations and streamline it and make it easier for people to do business. But also, when it comes to our zoning designations, I think there's a lot of confusion in, about what the different zoning districts do. And so this person would be looking at those zoning districts, looking at the whole zoning ordinance, and then taking a specific look and, and helping us think about how we can do a better job of getting businesses to locate downtown. It's a, the, the proposal, the request for qualifications was put together with input from the planning commission, from some, some outside funders, from a couple of folks who do this business, who kind of helped me think about the right questions to ask. We don't know exactly how much this is gonna cost. That's why we have to do a request for, for qualification proposals, because we want to know, understand what this is gonna cost. I have written a grant to cover up to $65,000 of the cost of this. I should know back on that grant with, hopefully before, before our proposals come in, and that'll help us to determine whether we need to figure out, whether there's some other funding sources, or whether we need to reduce the scope, or, or sort of how to, how to figure out how to right-size this within our budget. But hopefully, it's gonna be the first sort of, or, or, and early, I think the, the, the Mont Eagle Elementary School sign is, is, is probably officially the first idea that came out of Imagine Mont Eagle as a way to help move us forward and help us do, do a better job with our planning and zoning. So I'm excited about it. So that, look for that to happen. We're probably gonna have some public meetings and some public input sessions after the first of the year would be my best guess, and try to get that wrapped up by, by the spring.
Okay. Okay, alderman, any questions of Nate on Imagine Montego? Okay. Alderman report. Doreen, do you have anything?
Now, what exactly is this, the May Justice thing?
I don't know, I didn't get a copy.
Well, it's just laying up here, that's why I'm asking.
She dropped that off today, and just asked if I would give it to you all.
Okay.
This is a, a report for what, what the May Justice Library has done over the last year.
Excited, do you have input on this?
I was just going to, I was just going to share with you what Nate just shared with you. It's just a report that's, that's reflective of a 2023 summary of what happened at May Justice.
Which is pretty cool. I mean, the May Justice Library serves a population of thirty-three hundred and forty people who have library cards, so that, that's pretty impressive. There were seven thousand library visits this year, and they circulated twenty-one thousand materials, so that's books and, and books on tape checked out. I know with my family, we're, we're checking out from the May Justice Library a lot of books on, not, they're not books on tape anymore. What are they called? Podcasts or something like that? Well, I think they're, they come digitally out of the cloud and land in our phones nowadays, but.
Okay.
But it's, it's a pretty interesting report.
Yeah, I'm impressed.
Jessica, anything?
Yes, thank you.
Dan?
I'd like to say that it's been a pleasure to work with Jessica and Doreen the last two years. I'm thankful for their work prior to that also, and their contribution to our community. I, I have seen a lot of things that good have happened in their tenure, and I'd just like to commend them on what they've accomplished and wish them well in their continued, next thing they're involved in. So I also am working on the three pennies sales tax on gasoline. I'm going to harp on that till you all bury me. But I've had email communication with some of our legislators, and I just don't see with all the money in the world that we've got in this country that they can't free up three pennies for Montego to get for every gallon of fuel that is pumped within our district right here in this town, and it not all go to Jasper and to Marion County, and them get to divvy up where they want to, and us be left with an empty spoon. So I think it's a doable thing. I may be still shooting in the dark, but daylight might come. So I just report on that. I'll see what the emails reveal and my contact with what we're trying to do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Did they, did they talk to you at all about the reapportionment of the state sales tax portion?
They don't seem to be able to come up with what they would like to because the people that get the sales tax, Grundy County and Marion County, they sort of like getting that money.
Well, there was, there was some, a bill put forth the last two years to change the amount of sales tax that, that the state keeps.
The counties have to do that themselves. They have to bow to that. In other words, they have to just say, okay, well, we'll give you this mid-percent instead of this mid-percent.
Well, this is not the county's percent, this is the percent that the state keeps. So apparently back in the nineties, when the state was in some fiscally harder times, they started keeping a larger proportion of it.
Right.
And there's been a bill the last two years to try to shift more of that back to local municipalities.
Yes, and there is communication, there is communication that that is another opportunity, so.
What happened to the bill?
So it keeps getting, it keeps getting reintroduced, and so, you know, as we're having conversation with our legislators, it's an important one to push because that, that in of itself would change certainly Montego's.
Participation, yes, yeah, absolutely.
But thank you for looking into the gas tax as well.
Just so you all understand, that would be for the general fund, not the enterprise fund of water and sewage.
Right, it's going to the general fund. It's going to build roads that'll do everything in the world that we hope to do. We need another lake. We need a few million for that. So we don't need a water problem, and I think it's, I think it's solvable. I think it's just something we should work toward and keep, keep ringing the bell.
All right, Nate, anything?
Well, I want to, to reiterate what Dan said. I've enjoyed working with Doreen and Jessica over two councils now. And so I'm, I'm going to be sorry to see them go, and so we're going to keep pestering them to keep volunteering now. So I hope y'all will both continue to participate, and I know you will, and I appreciate all you've done. Well, I put you on spot in front of TV, so now you can't say no.
You have to come to bingo.
Okay.
Yeah, we're still doing bingo, by the way.
Obviously, I echo those thoughts. This was two years of working with you both, and as Dan says, we've accomplished a lot. But I also ask, and I was holding my comments for the upcoming meeting, whoever's successful in the election, the judge will be here for City Court, he will be swearing in the two successful aldermen to fill that seat, so. I was hoping if Doreen and Jessica can attend that meeting, that would be fine. It will either be the beginning or the end of City Court on Thursday, the twenty-first. So I just want to get that out, that when the judge will be here to swear in the two new aldermen. Okay, under Old Business, we have the second reading of Ordinance Number eighteen dash twenty-four, which is to rezone from C two to R three. Is there a motion to accept on the second reading, Ordinance eighteen dash twenty-four?
I make a motion to accept on the second reading, Ordinance eighteen dash twenty-four, rezone from C two to R three.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there discussion on the motion?
Trying to break it down so people can see it. My scroll finger is not very, something's going on here. Keeps scrolling off the screen, I think. There we go. Come on now. Keeps jumping back. All right. Well, I'm technically challenged today for some reason.
This is a piece by the Armory?
Yeah, yeah, this is the piece we just talked about in the public meeting.
Well, in the meantime, is there any discussion or questions on this motion? It's the piece across from the Armory. We know the history, it's been cleared. It's ready for development, as I understand it.
And what, what sounding is that going to?
It's going to R three from C two.
It's going, going from commercial to residential.
So, alderman, no further questions or comments?
No.
Roll call? All right, there's a motion on the floor. All those in favor of eighteen dash twenty, of accepting on the second reading, Ordinance eighteen dash twenty-four, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Second reading of-
There it is.
Now you're ready for the next one? Second reading of Ordinance nineteen dash twenty-four, which talks about campgrounds by special exception. Is there a motion to accept on second reading, Ordinance nineteen dash twenty-four?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you. Discussion on the motion? No questions or comments from the aldermen?
I think we told this one out.
Yeah, all right, then let's proceed to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Final item on the agenda is under New Business, the first reading of Ordinance twenty dash twenty-four, which is adopting the town of Montego zoning ordinances. This was explained at the Planning Commission meeting, and you all have heard. It's recommended, just good housekeeping, that we tie all of it together with this ordinance. So on the first reading, I'll accept a motion to accept Ordinance twenty dash twenty-four on the first reading?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there discussion on the motion?
So just to be clear for everybody out there listening, this doesn't actually do anything except take all the zoning amendments that we have passed since the last general zoning ordinance was made and put them into the document. So it's trying to give us a single document that's easier to read and understand. So as we make amendments to the document, it's hard to stick those in, and so this is just an opportunity. Everything is just getting stuck in, or everything that we have passed to date is stuck in it. So interestingly enough, it will not include those two ordinances we just passed, will it?
No.
They'll still be law, but it won't include them because they will have been passed after we got in it. So this is something, this is regular housekeeping that we probably need to do more often to make our zoning ordinance easier to understand and read.
Yeah, this was, Nate's exactly right. This will be an ongoing process of trying to keep our records up to date for easier reference and administration. So, we voted on that? Not yet. Oh, my fault. I'm sorry. Any other discussion on the first reading of Ordinance twenty dash twenty-four? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Any other new business? Okay, I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you. Is there a second?
A second.
Is there any objection? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you all.